Good morning. Thank you all so much for being here today. It is truly a treat when we get to see the audience full. It's just like a pastor. He doesn't want to preach to an empty pew, so... Today, we've got Dr. Fredericks here. He's with J First Baptist Church, going to come lead us in a word of prayer, and then we'll have the pledge. I'm going to ask Commissioner Pete to lead us in the pledge, and then we'll move on with the agenda. Thank you Pastor, and thank you Commissioner Pete. Soon, all the commissioners had an opportunity to read over the minutes and make a motion to approve the minutes unless somebody has something to add. Does anyone actually move for approval of the agenda? Does any commissioners or staff have anything to add to today's agenda or alterations?
I think the only thing I would ask, sir, if we can move the employee special recognition retirements to first on presentations, and then have the retail recruitment updates second after we complete that.
Okay. Roy, you good?
Nothing further.
All right.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Need to move the approval of the minutes of October 25th without objection, and November 8th, and November 20th.
Move both of those without objection. Thank you. All right, next, we actually, I believe, have Tappy and her staff. Tappy Valane is our supervisor of elections. For all you that don't know, and I just, I had asked staff, and I believe they reached out to Tappy, wanted to take just a moment, Tappy, if you and your staff could come forward, please. We wanted to take a moment while they were here today to help celebrate one of our employees, to tell them how much we appreciate them. Specifically, you know, I know a lot of us probably got sick of the news, you know, before and after the election that we just went through here in November, and, you know, that was the first recount this office I've been involved in since 2000. And I had the opportunity myself and Tony Gerard, he's one of our county judges, to take part in that and sort of see behind the veil, and it brought a new appreciation. And I had the opportunity to go back and even talk with some of our employees, and a lot of these ladies worked well over 20 days, and I think some of them over 30 days in a row. And it is truly a heavy load that they had to carry. And, you know, we went through it spotless, and I think that says so much not only to our county as a whole, but to our citizens, that for one, for electing such a great supervisor of elections, I saw her leadership and these ladies' dedication were remarkable, and I think that it has done so much to help foster that public trust in our county. And we just wanted to take a moment on behalf of the board to recognize Tappy and all the ladies in her office for your hard work. And I don't know if you have anything to say, Tappy, we'll give you the mic, but we had something that we wanted to present to you and tell you how much we do appreciate y'all.
Well, thank you very much. They're going to kill me because they knew nothing about this.[464.18][464.18](laughing) We also have two ladies, Lindsay McKinney and Tammy McGowan, who are actually taking some well-deserved vacation, but hopefully they're watching this morning, so thank you to them as well. Thank you for you guys, all of the support that you give, myself and our entire team. Sam, of course, she did a great job on canvassing along with Judge Gerard. And there are several people out here who also helped during the election process. Each and every time we conduct an election, we have well over 300 people that help in this process. These folks come in just temporarily each and every time to help us, and we could not do what we do without everyone and their commitment and dedication to the process and to making sure that each and every election, no matter how big or small, is successful here in Santa Rosa County, so thank you.
Thank you, Tappy. Well, we have, Don, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, I apologize, but I thought Phyllis might want to...[523.79][523.79](laughing)
I'm not paying this time.
Well, I was just going to say, on behalf of the entire board, it's my privilege to be able to, we're going to present you with a certificate of special recognition, and it is actually to the supervisor of elections' office, and it's for their commitment to upholding a high level of transparency and integrity throughout the 2018 election process. And so, we would like to come present that to you, and we'll get a photo, and put Lane in charge of photographs. Okay, and now, I think what so many in the audience are here for, we, Dan, I'll let you introduce us to what I think everybody knows has filled the audience seat today, and it's such a special part of this organization.
I think what we started last month is recognizing our employees who have committed, you know, their careers here to Santa Rosa County. There are three employees, two I want to throw up quick pictures. We had previous events for. First was Alita Floyd. She was our IT Director. Alita worked for the county for 41 years and took us from paper to wireless and saved money doing it, and made a significant impact. We had a little thing in her office. She didn't want anything big, so we did that earlier this week. The second one employee we had, another employee of 41 years, Mike Donahoe retired from the county extension. He was our county extension director and had a huge impact in our county with our agricultural community and our, really, one of the strong legs of our economy being agriculture. So, it makes me kind of nervous as a county administrator when you have 82 years, walk out the door within a week of each other of experience. So, what we're here, the third person that is retiring this month is another 28 years of experience. So, we're over 120 years of experience that are leaving the county. A lot of corporate knowledge, a lot of commitment to the organization and commitment to our residents. And the third person that's here in person today that we want to recognize is Ms. Michelle Parker. She's been the B.O.C.C. Coordinator from the courthouse days when we operated out of there to today. I know you all have worked with Michelle regularly throughout the years, and I'll turn it over to you. But first, I think Laura is here from Congressman Gates's office and wants to read a letter, and then I'll turn it over to you, Mr. Chairman.
Come on up, Laura.
Good morning. I'm Laura Rakess, and I'm here on behalf of Congressman Matt Gates, and I'm also here as a personal friend of Ms. Parker's. She was one of the first people that I had the pleasure of meeting when our office started reaching out to local county governments when the congressman first took office two years ago. And she has been so helpful to me and to our office, always there to share information and offer advice, and I've had many conversations with her here in her office about business and also about her family, her children, and her grandchildren, and my children. And we just wanted to present her with this special certificate of congressional recognition presented to Michelle Parker in recognition of outstanding and invaluable service to the community, and we thank you for your service, and we wish you well on your retirement.
Thank you. Thank you very much.[832.01][832.01](applause) Thank you.
This time, I think it'd probably be appropriate to open it up to my fellow board members that have had the opportunity to serve for much longer with Michelle than I have, and then I'll say a few words at the end. Commissioner Solter.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As we sit here today, we lost four words. Michelle Parker has been Santa Rosa County for many, many, many years. She has helped train numerous county commissioners and kept a lot of them out of trouble.[882.01][882.01](laughing) You are not only invaluable to the county as an organization, you're invaluable to this community. All of the things you do to make Santa Rosa County, especially Milton, a better place to live, work, and play is countless. I was going to say a little bit about, I read a story not long ago about the train of life. The day we're all born, we get on the train, and that train takes off. Along the way, the train makes many stops. Some people get off, other people get on. Many years ago, the train stopped and you got on board. You came to the county. Today, tomorrow, the train stops, and you get off that train, but you're not getting off the train of life. On Monday, you're going to get back on the train, and it's going to take you into a new life and more enjoyment. So, enjoy your ride. The train doesn't stop. It's going to keep going for you. We're going to miss you. We love you. You are a family. I've had the privilege and the honor to work with you for 18 years, even before that, and it's been a blessing, and I just want to say thank you. You are a family. Thank you.
Commissioner Cole.
Commissioner Cole. I guess we're going to go in order of length of time that we've enjoyed Michelle's company, and Don's absolutely right. My wife makes sure I'm dressed right in the morning, and Michelle makes sure I'm where I need to be as a county commissioner, so (laugh) thank God I'm still going to have one of them around.[997.63][997.63](laughing) Don said it all. Her value to the county is, like the commercial says, priceless, and her friendship to me, my wife, my family, is invaluable, too. We pray together. We cry together. We laugh together. We've had a lot of good times together. And like Don said, it's not over. It's just rolling on down the road. And I've enjoyed meeting your family, your children, other members of your family, some of the Bruitan folks. And, yeah, I miss Noah. He's a fine guy, but we all know he's fishing in heaven right now, so...
Amen.
And just can't say much else other than look forward to a big hug here in a minute.[1055.23][1055.23](laughing) Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Solter.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't really know where to start. Don is absolutely correct. Michelle has brought up a large number of commissioners over the years, and I'm one of them. When I was first elected, Michelle took me under her wing and gave me a lot of good advice. She's shepherded us all through our schedules and going here and there and trying to keep us straight, and I know that's a full-time job in and of itself. Michelle is one of the kindest people that I've met. She took my son under her wing as well. She loved him from the first time she met him. She gave my son his first pet when he was five. I came to the commission office one day. Michelle had a goldfish sitting in her office in a little bowl for Brian. Brian was thrilled to get that goldfish. Three months later, I looked on Wikipedia, and the average lifespan of a goldfish was six months.[1130.98][1130.98](laughing) That goldfish lived for 18 months.[1133.92][1133.92](laughing) But that's just an example of the kindness that Michelle has shown to all of us through the years. I appreciate everything you've done for me. I hope that you enjoy your retirement. I hope that we continue to see you, and wish you all the best.
Thank you, Commissioner. I tell you, on a light note, I had the opportunity, I told Michelle the other week, I have the privilege, we, my boys, who are still young, and when she got to know them, they were, it's hard to believe, but they were only three and five, and now they're five and seven, about to be eight, but, so we all affectionately call her Mama Parker. And so, I told her, I said, you know, it's kind of fitting. I think she waited till she had a Parker up here to retire so that she could have a Parker give her her retirement plaque.[1196.92][1196.92](laughing) And, you know, I tell you, it has been a treat, and truly, it was so monumental in my household. True story, my wife asked me last night. She said, "Do I need to take the boys out of school to go up there?" And, you know, I said, "Well, I don't think they need to necessarily miss school," but they love coming to see her. They always look forward to it, talk about it. She is just as Lane and Don and Bob said. I remember when I got elected, it was, you know, "Come in here and sit down, and I'm going to help get you started," and has been a nice, you know, really become not a coworker but a friend and somebody that you can lean on, and I appreciate the heart that she has always shared. I appreciate, you know, one thing is, when she's not going to be around here every day, I feel like our office attendance will go down. I'm going to tell you everywhere from family to friends to business leaders to elected officials, I mean, you could sit in my office and see them walk down the hall, and that's where they were headed. They would go back there and say they just enjoyed spending time with her and seeing her, and your reputation precedes you in this community. And so, I appreciate the friendship and the love you have shown to my family, and I appreciate the knowledge that you've given me while I've had the opportunity to serve here on this board, and thank you so much for your service to the community and service to all of us and the previous commissioners.
Mr. Chairman is the new guy. I just want to say, I asked Michelle when I first came in, "You're not retiring because I'm here now, are you?" And she reassured me she wasn't. But in my career, I've had many transitions, and I can tell you, Michelle, none have gone as smoothly and as perfectly as you made mine to come up here and sit on this dais. So, I'll be ever thankful for you and the start you've given me. I've heard my fellow commissioners, I'm sad, and Lynn's sad, that you won't be here with us, working with us, but we know we can count on you if you see something going astray. I expect you to give me a little call and keep me straight still.[1335.33][1335.33](laughing) So, I just want to say thank you on behalf of the county. Thank you, and as we said in the Air Force, Godspeed you. Enjoy that retirement.
Now, I'd like to ask any members of our staff if they had any words to say, or any members of the audience. I feel like this would be a fitting time if you had anything you wanted to say.
Well, I'd like to say that Michelle has helped raise my family, and I appreciate that over a long period of time, before I was working here and after. She's been a great help to me, and I appreciate it.
As long as you're out, aren't asking for more funding. That's more fun.
No, 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 no. Not today. That'll come later. That'll come later. I just wanted to say, number one, congratulations on your retirement.
Thank you.
It's well deserved.
Thank you.
And we love you, and we're going to miss you.
Thank you.
But I will tell you, you're right. I'd walk past all these guys' offices because I really didn't want to talk to them, but I'd go straight to you because you are truly a blessing to the county.
Thank you.
And if you decide you want to come back after being bored in retirement, don't come to them. Come to me.
Okay.[1411.65][1411.65](laughing)
I'd love to have you. And this is just a small token from us to you.
Thank you.
And thank you for your service to the county.
Thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am.
Congratulations. Thank you.[1421.11][1421.11](applause)
Got to take the glasses off.
Yep. Thank you. Thank you.
Also wanted to take an opportunity, I know I got to see in the audience, we've got Commissioner Melvin, and I believe Commissioner Buckley in the audience, and I know those are some more that wouldn't be where they are today and wouldn't have the success with the county without Michelle's tutelage. So, I think Commissioner Pete is right. She would straighten us out, and really, there's no words that can put in just how much you're going to be missed on this office, but how appreciative we are for you. So, at this time, we would like to come down there, and we've got a plaque we want to present to you and get a photo, and then we'll wrap this up, and so that way we can go back there and just continue to celebrate and love on you.
Wow, I never thought I'd be sitting up here, but one day. You never know.[1598.01][1598.01](laughing) Good morning, commissioners current and past, coworkers, my awesome family and friends. I am truly wowed by how many people showed up this morning. Thank you all for coming. I have much to say, so I wrote it all down.[1624.33][1624.33](laughing) As I was writing this, there were so many different emotions. I was happy because I'm retiring and going to get to spend all this time with my grandchildren and family. Then I started thinking about the people I'm leaving. I've been blessed to work with Santa Rosa County for almost 29 years. The commissioners and citizens are what makes this county and has made this county, in my opinion, the best of all 67 counties in the state of Florida. We have grown in many ways. I've seen commissioners come and go, but we never miss the beat. My job responsibility afforded me the opportunity to be trained, to keep things moving in a positive and productive manner. The advice I gave to each commissioner once elected was to vote what's on your heart if you feel this right. I've seen this county grow during my tenure by almost 100,000 citizens. Every citizen's request or concerns has been handed in a proper and timely manner. My work family has become personal to me, even though we're not blood-related. It feels like we are in so many ways. I watched your children grow up and now have seen your grandchildren grow up, not to mention, some of you had black hair, and now it's gray.[1712.83][1712.83](laughing) As...[1717.33][1717.33](laughing)
I take gray.
As I, well, as I stand, as I sit here before you all today, I can honestly say that I'm so proud to have worked with all of you. I'm thankful to have served this county and every commissioner that has been sworn in to the office of county commissioner of Santa Rosa County. I am also proud to say that I left my small little mark on a beautiful county that has given me and my family so much. And lastly, I must say, I am thankful that I serve at Almighty God, who has given me the strength to make it through so much. This is not goodbye. It's see you later. I love you and thank you again for being here this morning. Now I can get started planning my world tour. I'm out. My first destination, Houston, Texas, with much gratitude and appreciation. Thank you.[1778.01][1778.01](applause)
I'm going to get a privilege here, but we'll just get one. I'm gonna get a privilege here, but we'll just get one.
Thinking that you're already seated, I needed it. Hello.
that way, if you hear one that I'd read on that you want to come speak on, just please I know many of you will be joining us for a reception that we're having in honor of acknowledge and that way we'll know that we have somebody here. Michelle afterwards. The first one is repealing Chapter 19, the special districts shores of Santa Rosa Community Before we get to that, though, before we have an opportunity to get to it, she may Development District. even excuse herself out there, but we're gonna get an update on the retail recruitment Do we have anybody here to speak on that? in Santa Rosa County presented by Chuck Branch, he's with Next Site 360. Roy, do we need to do anything in particular or do you want me to just go down the list first? And this wouldn't be, this wouldn't be an opportunity if it wouldn't for Gulf Power
How old do you need to vote to repeal the ordinance?
Okay. Entertain a motion or? partnering with us to help make this.
Move to repeal the ordinance without objection.
So, we'll let Chuck come on.
Mr. Chairman, we have public hearings scheduled at 9:30.
Hearing none objection, hearing none, that is repealed. Okay.
If we could just run, I know we have four public hearings, two vacations, we can
Number two is the proposed ordinance, amending ordinance 2008-23, the Bernath Place subdivision
run through those and then Chuck will give his update at the end.
Thanks for giving me on track. improvements municipal services benefit unit.
This amendment to this ordinance is to revise the language in the ordinance to allow construction and improvements to the emergency repairs necessary on the bridge as well as additional roadwork for an alternate entry. The President of the HOA, Elise, is here. I think the key here is this allows the MSBU to fund those types of activities which were not allowed prior to this amendment. And the second piece is that we will be finalizing a loan to support the MSBU and their construction activities that they need to undertake. We bring the terms of that loan back to the board as a separate action, but the uniqueness is we won't assess an MSBU rate until next fall, so the loan will be taken out prior to the MSBU being assessed.
Dan, thank you and Roy for working on this and thank you so much for spearheading this and getting this done. I know your community probably will not even tell you how appreciative they will be of this done. I think we're about to pass it, but I don't want to be remiss if anybody wants to come speak, be more than welcome, but otherwise, I think we'll... Yeah, absolutely. And just quick story, real quick, when she came into my office to see me about this initially, I got a whiteboard in my office, I write stuff down so I don't forget. And she didn't see Bernath Place on my whiteboard, so she got up and took a dry erase marker and she wrote it on there, she said, "'Cause I don't want you to forget it." So, I appreciate your tenacity.
Thank you, Sam. I'm Elise Teague, the Bernath Place Homeowners Association President, and my address is 3249 Bernath Place. I just want you to know that we, in all of the votes that we put out in the proxy, we didn't receive one single no for the MSBU. The entire community is extremely grateful for this. And it's been a slow process, learning a lot about how long engineers take to do things, unlike Mr. Furman who gets back to me real quick. But outside of the county, trying to get the bridge repair estimates and designs and the road designs is a long task. And we appreciate all your patience and support from the community, thank you very much.
Well, just know that we wouldn't be here today if it wouldn't have been for, again, your efforts and the community standing behind you. And I know it's been unfortunate and it's been stressful, what you've been through, but I'm encouraged that this process will help us get it resolved and get that bridge where you need it to be and get the community back to a safe place.
Thank you. And there's still hope, prayer for possibly a railroad crossing, but we'll see.
All right, thank you. Entertain a motion to approve this?
Move.
Hearing none, that passes. Item number three is the proposed ordinance establishing the municipal service taxing unit to fund law enforcement operations in the county. Do we have anybody here to speak on that?
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Cole?
I believe with the amount of the funding that goes to this county, the amount established and that goes to the Sheriff's Office that the MSTU is long overdue and I'd like to move it without objection.
Hearing none, that's approved. Item number four is the annual resolution authorizing the uniform collection of non-advalorem assessments for projects which may include road paving, water, sewer, fire protection, et cetera, or other purpose authorized by law. Do we have anybody in the audience here to speak on that? I'm gonna look for a, entertain a motion to approve.
Move.
Hearing none, that's approved.
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Cole?
Just for clarification, this is not a new tax. Every time we do this on an annual basis, we get phone calls about what kind of new tax we're putting on our citizens. This is pretty much just paperwork to move the, this advalorem, non-advalorem forward, so it is not a new tax.
Thank you for clarifying that for everybody, Commissioner Cole. Item number five is the proposed vacation of a portion of Myrtle May Road is requested by Richard Dees and Linda Dees. Do we have anybody here to speak on that today? Hearing, yes, sir, please come forward. If you will, just when you get here, for a minute, state your name and address so they can enter it in the record, thank you.
Yeah, I'm Richard W. Dees. My address currently is 1251 Northwest 98th Avenue, Plantation, Florida, 33322. The said property, I think was a mistake to have been deeded to the county or the county to accept it. What it was, was there was an engineering survey because the property that we're, that's in question, has a downhill slope and it's a runoff. The county initially said that they were not going to accept that piece of land because of the runoff, that it was gonna take a holding pond that would be far, far larger than the land would take. And it would actually have to have an easement into Cooper Basin. So, somehow, when it was done, the right of way that's on top of the hill doing Myrtle May Road was accepted, but it was also accepted all the way down to the end of the power line or where the power line ends on the road. And so, that's why I own three sides of it and that's why I was wanting to get that piece of property back or, yeah, it's family property, so that's why I was wanting to get it back and hopefully builds.
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Cole?
This is in District Two and I'd move for approval without objection.
Thank you.
Hearing none, objection, that's approved. And thank you for applying and getting this straightened out.
Okay, sorry to take up your time.
No, thank you so much. We'll move on to our last public hearing, number six, proposed vacation of a portion of Simpson Drive is requested by Fernando Chavez and Maria Chavez. Do we have anybody here to speak on that today? Yes, sir, please come forward. If you will, just for a minute, for the record, will you just state your name and address, please?
Yes, sir, my name's Goodlow Farrington, address is 2235 North 61st Avenue, Pensacola, Florida.
Thank you, sir. You can pull that up if you want to be more comfortable on it.
Yeah, okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I'm a consultant for El Paso Mexican Restaurant at 5041 Dogwood. We've asked, requested, I think the road's been closed behind our property and request to take possession of the property to be used for additional parking. And I think the, we've gone through the proper procedures and all, I think that's been taken care of and we're here today to see if we can get that grant requested.
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Cole?
I believe this is also in District Two and I, my feelings are that I'm gonna have to oppose this. I think keeping that portion of property for, you know, Dogwood is, and that area's rapidly growing, I don't have a problem with them, you know, using it for parking, I think they are now, but I've got a little bit of hesitation in vacating public property to this business or to anybody right now. It's got a DOT holding pond on the north side or the northwestern side. You know, if we continue to grow, there may be need to expand that holding pond, but I just don't think it'd be prudent for us to vacate that portion of that property.
Is this the area that's currently like gravel?
Sir?
Or asphalt. And it's already, it's already got markings for parking, doesn't it?
Yes, sir.
Is that under like a, I guess that may be sort of a Roy question, is that under any sort of current agreement? I mean, I probably patron that restaurant more than anybody up here, I think that's sort of an inside joke, but if it's already got markings for a parking lot, how does that happen, Roy?
Well, the area I don't think is delineated for parking yet. The only contact we've had in regard to this vacation process is a indication from FDOT that they've reviewed it and that this time they have no need for, they would receive half of the property under, because they have the adjacent property and that they don't have any need for it at this time. So, they don't, FDOT does not object to the vacation.
Sir, you may be able to help me, but does this line on the west side, isn't that where a chain link fence is at?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Yeah, so it's already being used as a parking lot. I mean, it's got, it's got striping and
Yes, sir.
Gravel in between a couple of the spots and
Yes, sir.
Telling on myself, but I do make it over there occasionally. Commissioner Lynch?
Roy, if Commissioner Cole has some concerns about the future need for expansion of that drainage pond in the area, and I understand those concerns, and this is a very congested intersection, would it be possible for us to enter into a license agreement with them to allow them to continue the use of that area as a parking lot and indemnify us from any liability associated with that? That way you get to use the whole vacated area, area that's proposed to be vacated rather than half, because if we vacate it, half of it's gonna go to FDOT, they may move their chain link fence and you lose the parking that you're using now. But then in the future, if we need to expand that pond or otherwise utilize that space, we could revoke the license.
Yeah, we can do a revocable license agreement if that's what the board would prefer.
I would propose that we entertain that idea if the applicant is amenable to that.
I appreciate Commissioner Lynch's thought on that. My only caveat may be, so I love that, but could we have it to where it is, I guess you'd say fair and equitable to all the citizens that whatever apportionment that would be, if it were vacated, the apportionment that they would be paying in property taxes, that we could just receive that as sort of that licensing agreement? And the only reason I say this, I don't, this is probably pretty unique in the county and I wouldn't want to be accused of us allowing somebody to use it for, you know, private enterprise and not at least paying what they would have paid in property tax.
We, the, it's currently not assessed because it's a road and I don't think that you're gonna find that there's gonna be a great amount of value to that assessment, so probably the effort in assessing it and collecting the taxes is gonna be more than we're gonna collect in it.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure, I didn't want the backlash to come that we were allowing the use of public property, but...
Or we'd find, or would find if we went through the process, it would be a de minimis value.
Okay. Commissioner Lynch, do you want to, I know Commissioner Cole had made a statement, we don't actually have a motion.
Roy, could we do the same as Commissioner Lynch wants to do with a, like a lease agreement? A license agreement is more advantageous to the county than a lease agreement. It allows them to use it until we decide that we don't want them to use it anymore in revocable interest in the property. We've done that for other properties where people would use it for a garden or landscaping or whatever, that, we wouldn't allow any type of permanent structures on it and we retain the right for any utilities or whatever, but it would, it would give them the right to use it for parking if that's what, if that's what they intend to do.
Do you want to make a motion?
Commissioner Lynch will make a motion without objection, I'll be fine with that.
And, sir, do you, sir, do you understand the direction we're going?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right, you're comfortable with that?
Yes, sir, we're fine.
Okay, all right, then I would move that we direct staff to draft the appropriate licensing agreement to reflect that arrangement that was discussed earlier, bring it back to the board for approval.
Yeah, we'll have to bring it back and get it signed up.
Bring it back to the board for approval once prepared. I would do so without objection.
Hearing none, that passes. And thank you so much, Commissioner Lynch, for innovative thinking. So, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
They'll get with you and you'll be allowed to continue using it.
Thank you.
All right, that, so there's no other business, I'll close public hearings. And I believe that brings us back to the update on the retail recruitment by Chuck Branch. Yes, ma'am?
I'm Elise Teague, Bernath Place. Are we also going over the amount, the initial loan amount today?
We'll bring, we'll bring the final terms of the loan back to the board. The initial amount is about $275,000 for the loan to do the bridge repairs and the roadwork that's necessary.
Right, okay, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Branch, Archana? And again, I think, I saw Steve here earlier and he stepped out, I was trying to give him a shameless plug that we appreciate Gulf Power partnering with us to make this opportunity available.
Yes, just real quickly, just like to introduce Mr. Chuck Branch. We engaged Chuck and Next Site back in March, April timeframe and just wanted to bring Chuck back in to give the board, the audience, a overview of what the, what he's been seeing over the past year and the, what kind of demographics and all the cool data that he's about to show you, so, no doubt.
Thank you for coming this morning.
Hey, Mr. Chairman, how you doing? Commissioners, good morning, appreciate the opportunity to come back and give you a quick update, respectful of your time, so I'm gonna try to run through this pretty quickly and leave enough time at the end for some questions. So, we were engaged late March, early April.
us back to the update on the retail recruitment by Chuck Branch. Yes, ma'am?
I'm Elise Teague for Navplace. Are we also going over the amount, the initial loan amount today?
We'll bring, we'll bring the final terms of the loan back to the board. The initial amount is about $275,000 for the loan to do the bridge repairs and the, the roadwork that's necessary.
Right, okay, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Branch, Archana. And again, I, I think, I saw Steve here earlier, and he stepped out, I was trying to give him a shameless plug that we appreciate Gulf Power partnering with us to make this opportunity available.
Yes, just real quickly, just like to introduce Mr. Chuck Branch. We engaged Chuck and next site back in March, April timeframe, and just wanted to bring, bring Chuck back in to give the board, the, the audience, a overview of what the, what he's been seeing over the past year, and the, what kind of demographics and all the cool data that he's about to show you, so, no doubt.
Thank you for coming this morning.
Hey, Mr. Chairman, how you doing? Commissioners, good morning, appreciate the opportunity to come back and give you a quick update, respectful of your time, so I'm gonna try to run through this pretty quickly and leave enough time at the end for some questions. So, we were engaged late March, early April of this year. We spent the first 60 days, as we typically do, focused on collecting information from Shannon and his staff, doing some market drives, doing all of our market analysis, putting together marketing materials, and preparing ourselves to start representing both Pace in Navarre and Santa Rosa County. I am going to refer to Pace as the general area instead of the different subsections, although we have looked at multiple areas within what I will call Pace. I'll run through this very quickly. If someone does see something that prompts a question, do not hesitate to interrupt me. We were engaged, as a reminder, to do, put together some very unique research and market analysis, identify realistic retail targets, put together a marketing and recruitment plan, and then proactively recruit on behalf of the two respective unincorporated areas, and then affect positive change within your community. I will note that in the past couple of days, we have been engaged by Milton, so we are now working for Milton and two of your unincorporated areas. I won't take time to go through this, you have it on your, in your packet and on your screen, but it details all of the different things that we have done on your behalf and the area's behalf. As I mentioned the first time we came in, we start every engagement by understanding consumer travel patterns through the ability to track mobile devices. Now, we are licensing this data, it is anonymized, so I cannot tell you that a specific person is represented by a dot, and these dots represent multiple consumers. But we have mapped the consumer mobile data for three areas in and around Navarre, and we've mapped several different areas in and around Pace, including the Publix area on Woodbine. You can see this, the green indicates the common daytime location of those mobile devices, the common evening location, and what we call path to purchase. Where were those mobile devices two hours before they visited the location that we used, used as the target zone or target retailer? There seems to be a pretty consistent, through all of the different areas, an in-migration, out-migration of daytime employment based on some tools that we have and some models that we've put together. We do see rather large regional trade areas. In this case, we're looking at more of the coastal trade area as it relates to Navarre. We have created multiple regional trade areas, so our work with the project in Navarre, Heart of Navarre, we have passed along all of our market research to Mr. Hoffman, so that he has it at his disposal to use in his efforts, but it is a much larger trade area than this. It captures Milton, Pace, and points north, and creates what we would call a superregional trade area that can be drawn to a unique development like Heart of Navarre. I gotta put on my glasses. This is just, again, that regional trade area along the coast, 145, 146,000 in population. I'm just gonna hit some of the high spots, average household income of almost 78,000. It is a highly educated population. As you can see from the educational attainment, over 70%, or right at 70% of the population has at least some college, large number of associate degrees, bachelor degrees, and graduates. That's the type of profile that is going to be engaged and will have an impact on the type of retail, and of course, entertainment that would come to the Heart of Navarre project, and it will also impact some of the conversations that we're having regarding both quick service and, and a lot of conversations we're having regarding full-service restaurants along that corridor. We've also done segmentation data, so our data provider breaks the community or the trade area or the radius or the drive time down into 65 different segmentation groups. We have focused on the top 10. All of this research has been delivered to Shannon and his team, we have delivered it to dozens of developers that we've met with, tenant reps, and individual retailers. Beyond that, each of the segmentation groups has a definition. One thing that has surprised us not only in this area but throughout the Panhandle is the large number of millennials, which we know they're here, but it's looking at the income levels, which I think opens up some additional development opportunities beyond retail. You also see a large number of single resident retirees, of course, large retirement community. I will point out that all of the population statistics and, and data that we've done in these research reports is year-round residential, and that's one of the things that we focused on early in our process and in our conversations with developers, tenant reps, retailers, was that a lot of people think this part of Florida, in the Panhandle, come October, everybody leaves and they show back up in April. And so I think we have enlightened a lot of people to the large year-round residential population, and then we're working with some of the tourism boards throughout the Panhandle to get a better understanding of the tourist traffic during peak seasons. We've also done radius and drive time analysis, typically more of a local market capability. What do those consumers look like that are gonna be consistently dropping by the grocery store or going to the local convenience store or visiting both quick service and full-service restaurants? Most of the developers and tenant reps that we're working with want to see both a regional trade area, what's the largest amount of draw that I can expect, and what's that more local draw? All of our research also includes daytime population, so how many people are working in businesses within X number of miles or X number of minutes, so that they can capture them during lunchtime for the most part, or they can capture them on the AM or PM side of the road as they come into work or go home. I'm gonna skip, just for time purposes, and that's same type of analysis. We've done traffic, updated traffic counts using Florida DOT and some additional resources that we have. Traffic is going to be critical in convincing some of these retailers to take advantage of those people that are traveling along the major thoroughfares. And both for Navarre, and you'll see later in, in just a moment, for Pace, we have put together marketing materials. This is what we typically will leave with a developer when we go to ICSC conferences. It's short, it's sweet, it's to the point, we don't bog them down with a lot of information. The goal is to get, pique their interest, and then when we get back to our offices, we will set up a base camp account for them, much like we've done for Shannon and his team, where we upload all of the information relative to the different trade quarters that they are interested in or locations. We have also mapped all of the existing retail, and as that retail, new retail comes to the market, we will update these, but it allows them to better understand, is my competition in the market, is there an opportunity to out-position or beat my competition to the market? Or, in some cases, where are those retailers that we typically want to locate next to and leverage the draw to those concepts? Here's Woodbine Road, we think that there's tremendous opportunity up there to leverage the Publix traffic, and again, we've done all of the mobile mapping analysis based on that Publix. We've also, and we've mapped three different areas in the traditional retail quarter. This is Santa Rosa Commons, again, you can see the large size of that trap, or draw area of people. Now, to some extent, those people in the Pensacola area are coming over into this area for work, and so it's more of a, how do we, how do we grab their attention during the daytime or as they're coming into or out of the market? There's your residential, for the most part, common evening location, and then there's your consumer traffic patterns. Screen's not large enough to do it, but actually, there's a large contingency of consumers coming from as far west, east as Crestview, Defuniac Springs, that are using Santa Rosa Commons as a retail trade area. And so there's the size and scope of that one, and in this case, 100,000 seems to be the inflection point where a lot of retailers get interested in the market. And then you can also see in this one that we're still in that 70,000, so anything above 60,000 in income, and as you approach that 90 to 100,000 in population, it opens the doors to a lot of conversations. We have had several conversations, thankfully, because they are also a Birmingham-based company, but Blackwater Resources, who did the Dick's Sporting Goods and the Ulta Development, is interested in looking at additional opportunities in the market, as are several other shopping center development groups. I'll get through this so we can get to really the most important part of my conversation today. I'll leave you to review this at your leisure. I know it's something that you'll want to do most of the afternoon, so take your time. But I want to get over, so again, traffic count maps for the Pace area, including all of the major thoroughfares, and again, all of those major thoroughfares are what DOT tends to focus their collection data on. Again, marketing materials for Pace, and we've mapped, again, all of the retail and all of the different quarters in, in the Pace area. ICSC, so started our engagement in April, we did enough research within the first couple of weeks to allow us to position and market the areas at the ICSC Recon Conference, which was in mid-May in Las Vegas. It's the largest conference we attend annually. We have also represented and positioned the areas at all of the additional ICSC conferences that you see on the screen, except for the one in the lower right-hand corner, which is the former Texas Conference, which was moved to January this year, so we are in preparation right now to represent and have meetings with developers, tenant reps, and retailers at that conference on January the 9th. And over the next year, we will be attending 12-plus ICSC and retail live conferences, again, representing the community, representing specific sites, working with developers and tenant reps who are actively pursuing concepts for the market. The Atlanta ICSC dealmaking was several weeks ago in October, I thought I would focus on that one, just to sort of give you an, an update. We met with every retailer that attended that conference, we have provided Shannon and his team a list of those retailers, along with the parameters that they use to define whether a market makes sense. As we tell Shannon and all of our clients, don't get caught up in that being yes or no. A lot of those, there's some wiggle room, there's unique stories to be told, and a lot of times, these developers don't understand the uniqueness of the markets, and so we spend a lot of time storytelling. Tenant reps, the ones that you see on the list, represent approximately 90% of the retailers that would be considering this part of Santa Rosa County. They're from all over the southeast, we are in touch with them, we have provided them market analysis for the different areas, and we have given them our ideas of the retailers that they represent that we feel fit the market. The developers, this is representative, these are the ones that we specifically met with and had a discussion about both the Pace and Navarre markets while we were there in October. We will have many other conversations throughout the years, but I thought I would let you see the names. These developers are from North Carolina, Georgia, Tennessee, Alabama, Mississippi, and Florida. Lucky's and Wawa seems to be a question that we get a lot from different entities, particularly as it relates to the Panhandle. Lucky's is in the process of rebuilding their location in Panama City after the unfortunate hurricane. We've had some conversations with them about expanding westward. It is a Kroger subsidiary. Wawa, more of a convenience store that looks more like a grocery store, but they have started moving northward into the Florida markets, currently as far west as Tallahassee. A lot of what we do is try to get in front of these concepts a couple of years in advance of them actually entering particular markets, and so that's our effort with them. We have had several developers who have, in the past, focused on commercial retail, who are now interested in doing hospitality or hotel development. We also have several that are looking to do multifamily and/or workforce housing projects, particularly in the, this area and north, to capture those people that are working down on the coast but are coming northward for their residential location. We have connected with Mr. Hoffman, as I mentioned, and will continue to support his project, and the one that we get a lot of questions about, if you're familiar with Aldi Grocery Concept. They will be in the Panhandle, they are in the process of finalizing the land purchase to build a distribution center on the west side of Mobile, which will then allow them to distribute to all of the areas from Mississippi to the Panhandle along the Gulf Coast. We know that they are in the market looking at sites, and in some cases, they are land banking sites. We have been told that if there are multiple big boxes within the area, that they will have a store in that location. We also expect that they will have locations in Navarre, in fact, all of your four major communities will most likely have an Aldi sometime. I would, I'd guess construction would start late 2019 with openings in 2021. With that, one other quick thing that I mentioned to Shannon, we have also been approached by a developer that is interested in doing spec industrial space. It's not something that we focus on, it's more of connect the dots, so we are working with Gulf Power and Shannon's group to facilitate a conversation, and then we're smart enough to get the heck out of the way and let them worry about that. With that, I'm more than happy to answer any questions you have.
Commissioner Cole.
Thank you. Chuck, thank you for the presentation. Two things, I'm sorry if I missed it, what's Aldi?
Aldi is a grocery concept.
Grocery, huh, okay.
Yeah.
And then, will you kind of keep focused on 87 South? When they get the bridge complete and open that four lane, can we maybe re, relook at that traffic pattern?
Definitely.
On that, 'cause
And again, a lot of that's gonna be contingent of FDOT collecting that information and then making it available, or, I'm guessing, and I haven't had this conversation, there will probably be some traffic studies done that go along with the Heart of Navarre project.
Okay, great, thank you.
Because it would be impacted by any type of additional traffic options.
Chuck, are you hearing anything on F-dots? Is that impacting retailers, the expansion of 98 to six lanes? Whether they do a flyover or a
Yeah, not at this point, but at some point it will. Anything that makes it easier for people, I mean, the worst thing that can happen to an area is traffic congestion, so anytime you're expanding the road size or the number of lanes is going to have an impact, not only on your existing retail and ease of access, but also developers that are entertaining additional projects in that area.
And, and just from my knowledge, flyovers versus ground level, you know, when you put flyovers in, you hear horror stories about that sometimes.
You know, if you look at the flyover they did at the summit, I mean, excuse me, not the summit, but at the Galleria in Birmingham, Alabama, traffic increased substantially because of ease of access to the back part of that, or the second phase of that project. So yes, flyovers always decrease the congestion.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions?
I don't see any, thank you so much.
Um, yeah, I talked to Shannon, we will probably, with your permission, be back sometime in the late February, early March, after we've been to the next couple of ICSC meetings, and we'll have a little bit better idea of direction on some of the larger projects.
Thank you.
Good. Everyone have a great week. I do want to thank you for letting me go after Ms. Parker, that was, nothing like having to go after somebody that's getting all those accolades, so hopefully I didn't dumb down the conversation. Y'all have a great week, thank you.
Yeah, Merry Christmas. All right, next up, we have the consent agenda. I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda without objection. Here in none, that passes. We move to the admin committee. Let's see, meeting list here. Our number one is the meeting list, everybody has it in their backups. Does anybody have any commissioners' questions or concerns on the meeting list? Not, I'll make a motion to approve it without objection. Meeting list is approved. We don't have anything else under any of the other committee items. No other commissioners have anything to add, I'll open it to the public for public forum. Don't race up here all at one time. All right, seeing no public forum, we'll close the meeting, thank you so much. What, yes, sir? You coming? You almost missed it, I was about to hit the hammer. Come on. Thank you for coming. If you would, just let her know your name and address.
I filled out the card. My name is Keith Danton. I represent Danton Consulting. I live in Tallahassee, but have a office here in 13500 Sandy Key Drive in Perdido Key.
It's good to put a face with the, with the boys, thank you so much.
Thank you for giving me time today to speak. I represent more of Danton Consulting. My wife and I are both engineers, registered here in the state of Florida. I've done a lot of civil engineering design, done a lot of project management. Over my 35 years of experience, my wife is a traffic and transportation professional. The reason I'm here today is to speak a little bit about your project you'll be discussing later today, the P Ridge later today, the P Ridge Collector Road, the road that's being proposed between 90 and Hamilton Beach Road, to really create a new path for traffic, to take congestion away, and be a new collector road for you guys. I'm here today to kind of talk more about, personally, just because I represent a client that's basically trying to develop some of the property on the north side of the subject, where the school is, south of Hamilton Beach, north of the school, kind of east of the future roadway alignment. We were trying to get the whole 150-acre tract, but we're only able to get a contract on 50. There's also a lot of commercial development that's being proposed, I believe, along the 90 corridor of where this roadway will bisect. I've worked on a lot of projects over my career as a project manager and created public-private partnerships for roads such as this, not just to alleviate traffic, but also to create a regional infrastructure needs that could really help this area as it relates to water, sewer, regional stormwater ponds, that could really be done as a function of this roadway. And if you haven't already considered it, I really wish you would consider it, so you don't have to come back later and tear up the road and do other things that would create more costs and more congestion and more delays. I think you can do this in a way, which I have done in the past, to where you can work with the public, you can work with the utility providers, which is Pace. You can work with the engineers and develop a program that really benefits everybody in the region for water, sewer, traffic, and development. Because right now, you have all these developments in this area that are going to be waiting on this road to be done. And as they wait, you miss out on the tax collections from those properties, whether it's commercial, whether it's residential. So, I say all this as it relates to, you know, potable and fire needs, which will provide you a looped and redundant system. I speak of it relates to regional lift stations, to where you can, you know, tie in and build these stations that basically, when you work with the private developers in that area, you have interconnections and so forth, where they can tie in at a later date and not have to come in and build something at a later time that costs them time and effort. And that's what their impact fees are basically paid for. Stormwater. Stormwater is really a weird animal to where you can come in and build regional facilities as a function of this roadway with all the additional property owners. It will reduce the land needed. It will reduce the costs. And you can recoup the fees incrementally based on capacity, paid capacity that the developers will pay at a later date when they come in and need to tie into these regional If you look at this, it's a win-win for everybody, because it allows you and the utility providers to be able to create a better health, safety, and welfare for the region as it relates to fire protection, redundant water systems, sanitary sewer flow, and regional stormwater needs. So, one other issue too with the roadway. I've done so many roadways in my times with schools. And I know there's a future school to be placed on here. Schools eat up capacity and cause great operational problems on cut-through roads, which you're going to be building. I strongly advise you, like DOT now, with any new intersection or any new roadway, they really evaluate the opportunities of putting in roundabouts on roads. They work unbelievably as it relates to traffic crashes. They reduce fatalities almost 100% from T-bones and head-on crashes because of signals. Power goes out, you don't lose the function of the intersection. It also creates great speed reductions, and it keeps the flow moving. If you work with the local private developers, you can figure out where to strategically pace these roundabouts. But definitely, I urge you to place one at the school site somewhere along there to be able to continue that operational access with the schools. Signals, they range from anywhere from $250,000 to $300,000 to put in new signals with mast arms. Roundabouts, if you build them upfront, they're very minimal in cost and work very well. So, with a little bit of extra time, I think there's a way, if you also looked at, without increasing the cost of your projects, but maybe phasing the roadway project in a way to where you could build the north and south ingress into the property as your first phase, using your drainage basins as phase lines, putting in your first lift of asphalt with the utilities. Focus on the middle part of your property as the last component and with the wetland component there. This allows the landowners on the north and south to get in there earlier, to start their development and construction without hindering you. You can bond their improvements, hold up their COs, contingent upon the whole roadway being built. But then it saves them probably a year before they can get in and start working on their project, waiting for the whole roadway to be finished. And the utilities would already be in there. And Pace would come in, I believe, and be a great partner with putting in the water and sewer. So, I'm just here just to put a bug in your ear, just to kind of think about it, as it relates to what this project could be, not just a roadway project, but it could be a great public-private partnership, I think, that would benefit everybody, and it would be a win-win for everybody. Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming, Mr. Dan. Do we have anybody else here to speak today? All right, I'm going to hit the hammer this time so we can go. Meetings adjourned. Thank you.